Let the record reflect that meetings reconvene with all members present with Councilwoman Sukamoto and Councilman Landrigan excused. As we rise for the pledge, I ask you to remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and this great republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of our colleague and friend, Councilman Don Linkz. As a follow-up to our moment of silence for Don, each of the elected officials is asked to say a few words, and I will start off and we will follow up with a resolution in Don's memory. To say that Don and I did not agree on too many issues might be an understatement. From our first candidate's forum to our three years working together, we found ourselves on different sides of the issue very often. But I don't judge on whether you agree with me, and we should not be judged on where we stand, but on how we give. Don Linkz gave by serving our country in the Air Force during Vietnam War, and when he came back to Madison, he gave through his tireless passion for youth sports. He gave of his time, serving three years as a council member, fighting for the construction of the complex of the MRC. When he was told that his life would be cut short by ALS, he continued to give. He served his full term, and when it came to the point that he had to communicate through his laptop computer, he still continued giving. Nothing was going to stop Don from giving to his community. Acquaintances might even call him stubborn, a trait that served him well both in his battle for the fields and his battle against ALS. When Don was your ally, you couldn't have a stronger supporter. This was very evident as we worked together to restore the leadership structure in the borough a year and a half ago. When we were discussing the timing, it's when Don said in so many words, "Shoot, we need to fix this, let's go out and do it now." And of course, I always appreciated Don letting me know when we were ready to move on. As the discussion would go on, he would give a hand signal, and I would call for the next agenda item. So I can see him right now going, "So I shall move on." Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. It's hard to say more about Don than what was already said so eloquently at his funeral. His eulogy recalled him in a way that made everyone there laugh and cry and laugh and cry. He was passionate, enthusiastic, inspirational, and persuasive. In fact, I would not be sitting here right now if it were not for Don. So I don't know whether to thank him or to, you know, or not. He was irreverent and tenacious, he was dedicated, and he made me laugh, although sometimes at the wrong time. Our two years on council together were not without controversy, and shared experience forged a bond between us. My fondest recollection of Don was during the controversy surrounding the construction of the fields at the MRC. And don't forget it, it wasn't always as universally loved as it is now, and being a freshman councilman, I was a little overwhelmed by the passions and personalities involved. I remember asking Don what he thought, and his answer was simple and direct, as usual. Robbie said, "Do you think this is the right thing to do for the town, the whole town, not just the sports guys?" Sports guys. When I replied, "Yes," he said, "So then let's make sure it gets finished and make it the best it can be. Once you're sure that what you're doing is right, don't worry about the politics. Always do what you think is right." That really sums it up for me. Everything that Don did, he did because he thought it was the right thing to do. He cared little for politics at the moment, and he was willing to let his record speak for him in the cold light of history. You know, I was, uh, to relax sometimes, I either do algebra or I read Shakespeare. So I was reading The Tragedy of Julius Caesar recently, and when I got to Mark Antony's eulogy of Caesar, some lines really stuck with me. Those lines are that basically, "The evil that men do lives after them; the good is oft interred with their bones." Never has anyone been so wrong when it comes to Don. There's no evil that I can see that lives after him, and the good lives on with his family, his legacy, and the commitment to Madison as embodied in the Madison Recreation Complex. I'm going to borrow one more line from that eulogy. He was my friend, faithful, and just to me, and that's all I'm going to remember. Thank you, Mayor.
Carmella?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few short remarks because when Don left us on the council, I think we really spoke pretty eloquently about how we felt, and that was a great time for us because, you know, he was still with us, and he was still able to do one of those across the room and just give you a smile. But, um, so thinking about what I was going to say tonight, I was thinking, over the past few weeks, we heard a lot about Don's support of recreation. But I think what we have to remember about Don is that he was a husband, he was a father, he was a brother, and he was a veteran of a war that left him with a terrible disease that took his life. Don was proud of his service to his country, and that is what I think we should remember about him. I know it's going to be one of the things that I'll remember about him, as well as his tenacity, you know, about what needed to be done and how it should be done. But I think that one of the proudest moments of his life was his service to his country, and that's how we're going to remember him for a long time.
Thank you. Ostry?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to express my condolences to the Linkz family. Don and I were on council for one year together, and Madison has lost a very devoted, enthusiastic person, a community volunteer, a coach, a husband, and a father, and I know that Don cared very deeply about Madison, and he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't know Don very well, we didn't overlap, and I only met him actually personally very briefly at what was his last meeting. But sometimes you have a moment with a person that gives you a tremendous insight into what kind of person you're actually talking to and who indeed they are. I was standing here as he was leaving, and he came over to me. And I could be wrong, but I don't think I was his first choice for councilman. And he came over to me, and he gave me a big smile, he gave me a tremendous handshake, and he said, "You'll do great." And I thought, "This guy's really a good guy, and I'm sorry he's leaving, especially under those circumstances." So that's my one anecdote, and in retrospect, I'm sorry I didn't get to know him better.
Thank you very much. And I know Jeannie and Bob would want to be sharing their thoughts and their experiences with Don, but regrettably, they could not be with us tonight, so I'm sure we'll have an opportunity. Let's all stand as I read through this proclamation as we reflect on Don's life. Whereas Don Linkz faithfully served the borough of Madison as council member from January 1st, 2010, through December 31st, 2012, and whereas during his term of office, he served on 14 boards and commissions, and whereas Councilman Linkz was devoted to expanding and enhancing all recreational sports programs through the borough, and whereas Councilman Linkz's successful accomplishments on behalf of the borough of Madison include the development of two-lighted artificial turf field and a field house at the Madison Recreation Complex, to serve thousands of children and their families for years to come, and whereas Don Linkz loved Madison and initiated the planning for a lightning detection system for all sports fields to protect participants and spectators, and whereas mayors, council members, and fellow citizens held Councilman Linkz in high regard for his genuine sense of duty to the borough of Madison. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, extend condolences to the family of Don Linkz and express sincere gratitude and appreciation for his dedication, commitment, and efforts on behalf of the residents of the borough of Madison. Just a little clarification or update on our agenda, we're going to do things a little bit out of order. We will go to the minutes. My greetings to the public, we'll have our reports from committee, and communications and petitions, and then before we go to invitation for discussion, we will do the hearing for ordinance 32, and then we will go to resolution 234 and 235, and then move on to invitation for discussion. So may I have a motion to approve the executive minutes of June 24th, 2013?
I move 'em.
Second.
And these were already discussed, roll call a vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
And a motion for the regular minutes of June 24th, 2013.
I move 'em.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call a vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
All right. Welcome, everyone. For those that got here right at 8:00, including Sam, we were early, just for the record. We were out here about 20 minutes of, so once in a while, we can get through our agenda quickly and get here ahead of time. For the employees, the month of August, Frank Campi, Don Algier, and Angela Esposito of the Joint Municipal Court for their helpful, courteous, and pleasant assistance extended to the police personnel, and their nomination was submitted by the Chatham Township Police Department. So it's very, it's a great honor to be, that our partners in the joint court recognize the, not only great work, but the approach they put to their work. And we have an anniversary, the 20th anniversary, for Francine DiAngelo, the tax collector and chief accountant, on August 24th. And on a sad note, but we, our thoughts and prayers are with him as he goes to recovery, another great volunteer of Madison, Dave Carver, was in an accident recently, and he is recovering. He's currently now at the Kessler Institute in West Orange, and he will be there for up to three months as he recovers from an accident that gave him temporary, partially paralyzed and hopefully temporary paralysis. He would love notes, emails, and visitors are encouraged to visit between 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM. And for those who don't know Dave, he's the leader of the Girls Softball Madison and another tireless advocate for recreation. A reminder, tomorrow is primary day for the senate seat, so make sure you get out and vote, and if you are not declared, you may declare your party allegiance at the polls. If you are a party person, you must vote in the primary that you are affiliated with. I also want to share a note from, and a picture from Madison residents, the Crimmens family. These are the Crimmens children, along with the mayor of Madison, Alabama, and his wife. So we are now sending out diplomats to represent, ambassadors to represent Madison to the other Madisons. He sent an email to me saying he was traveling, which included taking him through Alabama and Madison, and so he sent some gifts to Madison, Alabama. And on a future, what's coming up in the future, I've talked to, we've been talking about the strategic planning process, and I was just talking to Ben Wolkowitz earlier today about the process we'll go through. To do planning for a government entity is not a straightforward thing, you can't bring out the book and just get right into it. So step one is we'll get together with a small group of people and outline the planning process. That will happen through the month of September, and we'll come back to the council with a proposal as to the full strategic planning process. I will ask the clerk if he can look through the building, and where someone must have the Madison in 1990s planning book that was done by, when Ralph Inglesman was mayor. I think that was the last time a full plan was done, just to help us guide. So we will get rolling on that, and it will be a very involved process, and will probably take us into a new year, to a new council. And that is all I have for today. Let's go to reports from committees, health and utilities. Carmella?
Thank you, Mayor. Blood drive was held at the Madison Health Department July 30th, and the Health Department wants to thank all the residents and the employees that participated that particular day. The North Jersey Blood Center collected 17 units of blood that day, which is an extremely successful amount for midsummer. The Health Department encourages residents to continue to donate blood at available drives, and anyone who does donate from now through January will be entered into a chance to win two Super Bowl tickets. Not bad. Flu shots. Flu season is coming fast. Madison clinics are scheduled for September 18th and September 27th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, for residents 50 years of age or older. For those who do not have Medicare B, Part B, please remember to bring your card to the clinic, the fee is $25. Also a reminder to all the parents of preschool children, that any child who attends preschool or daycare and is between the ages of six to 59 months must have a flu shot by December 31st to remain at the facility during flu season. Children may attend the monthly CHC clinic for flu shots or call the nurses at the Health Department to make an appointment. The animal census is continuing throughout the community. Again, if you haven't renewed your license to date and nobody has knocked on your door yet, you still have a chance to go out and get your license. All the rabies vaccines must be good through October 31st, 2013. Madison Health Department continues to provide vaccines through the New Jersey Vaccine for Adult Program, so even if you're insured or uninsured to receive vaccines such as meningitis, hepatitis A and B, you can get them at the Health Department. One of the things that I wanted to bring up is that we've, that the Health Department is very active, and we were very, very fortunate this year. Lisa Gula, who is our new health officer, is very interested always in having interns work with the staff. So we have a young person who'll be working for fall and spring semesters, and we'll be focusing on preparing the Health Department for their accreditation. They also have a fieldwork student who has a master's in health policy and administration from Seton Hall, who's working on updating and reducing an electronic version of all the nursing policies and procedures, and an REHS intern that is working with Tamika and Ben, doing a great job, by the way. We've had a great volunteer intern, Janice, who is unfortunately leaving this week, but we also have another person who is actually going to volunteer, no credit, to help mid- August through the December. She's a recent Rutgers graduate, will be, who will be starting her master's in January. What she'll be doing is helping with day-to-day projects and working with our second master's level, another student. So I think that this is absolutely wonderful, they've been a big help, they're absolutely wonderful kids to work with, so, you know, I think it was, it was a wonderful thing that Lisa's come up with to give a hand down there. I have Jeannie's report, who, and this is from the Water Department, and Central and Richdale Water Main with connection to Florham Park is completed, one last connection to be finished by the Route 24 Bridge. Main at Burnett and Richdale is completed, Richdale Avenue Water Main is being installed, well maintenance and inspection is ongoing, and water tests are all clear of bacteria. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, and if you have anything to do with Community Affairs, Mr. Catalinello?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The fields are ready for football, soccer, and field hockey. That's straight from the horse's mouth. We, the Construction Review Committee met last week, and I'm happy to report that we have satisfactory progress on the four pump stations for which we have encumbered money. Work at Candlewood is progressing nicely. Treadwell and West End have some redesign work to be done. North Street continues to progress, although at a slightly slower pace, and unfortunately, we will not have that completed in 2013, but we are optimistic that we will have completion of necessary work on 2014, although work that has been done to date has been significant and helped shore up the system. That's it for me, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The Police Department responded to 2,593 calls for service during the month of July. Only a, here are a portion of the calls that were handled by our police officers. Officers responded to, investigated 24 motor vehicle crashes, conducted 401 motor vehicle stops, issued 159 summons, made 19 arrests, conducted 138 raider posts. Madison officers responded to 121 alarm activations and conducted 587 premise checks, including daytime school checks, business checks, housing checks, and train station checks. Officers investigated 30 abandoned 911 calls, nine disputes, five domestic instances, incidents, checked on the welfare of citizens 19 times, assisted citizens 64 times, and investigated 35 animal and 28 utility complaints. That's a lot. The police also, during the month of July, investigated 15 suspicious incident occurrences, 27 suspicious motor vehicles, 27 suspicious persons, along with other calls for service. And they made 19 arrests during the month, three DWIs, three warrants, 11 drug arrests, one receiving stolen property, and one aggravated assault. And meanwhile, they continued their training, mandatory training for Alco Test Refresher, motorcycle accident reconstruction, drug recognition school, Guardian System reinforcement training, and in-house training on computer, social networking, and borough policy for the entire department. The Auxiliary Police also conducted 66.5 hours of work and training during June, and they have helped with the farmer's market, the blood drive, and have conducted monthly meetings. The ambulance corps and the Police Department responded to 71 medical emergencies for the month of July. And the Police Department took delivery of two new patrol vehicles, which are currently being outfitted. We have, they've advertised for a position of patrol officer, and CDS arrest for distribution in a school zone on Main Street, and placed a pay box replacement and reconfigured Lot 3 numbering system. They cleaned up the pistol range, cut down trees, removed decades of debris, and Sergeant Mishah was accepted into the Chiefs Association Command and Leadership School, also known as the West Point Command and Leadership Program. I also have a report, if you want, for Community Affairs, at Bob's desk.
Please.
Yeah, you want me to go ahead?
Please.
Okay, thanks. The Senior Citizen Center, they announced that for the first six months of 2013, they saw an increase of 509 van riders over the same period in 2012, reflecting the additional day of service and our new van higher profile. The 2013 Summer Seminars series just concluded another record-breaking season, and the series is co-sponsored by the Senior Center and the Madison Public Library with financial support from the Friends Organization. The Friends of the Madison Senior Center have also agreed to subsidize the cost of repainting our, the main room at the Senior Center in late August, and very sorry to announce that they lost their Senior Citizens Advisory Committee member, Nancy Blank, who passed away on July 4th. She was a very enthusiastic and supportive participant. Thank you, Mayor.
Just one more thing to add to your report, was a great national night out last Tuesday with
Oh, right, right. Thank you.
Over 24 various locations in Madison, it was great, for the first time, it wasn't the hottest night of the summer, and it was a beautiful night, and great to see everyone, and they collected quite a bit of food for the hundred.
Thank you for announcing that. I was at a planning board meeting, I couldn't.
Yeah.
Got to change to a planning board meeting.
I should have been there, but
That's okay. I stood in for you.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to begin by an announcement to make sure that no one comes too early to our next meeting. This is our only meeting in August. The next meeting of the council will be held on September 9th at 8:00 PM. We had a couple of interesting events in the world of finance over the last couple of weeks, and I'd like to at least review one of them, which is our bond sale. We did indeed go into the market and issue $4.15 million worth of bonds. The blended rate for that issuance was 3.109%. It was below the target that we had set as our max, and it was a little higher than I think some of us might have liked, but on the other hand, looking at it long-term, it was a very attractive rate. We also went in for 1.9 million of notes, that's to cover the $1 million that we anticipate getting from the Board of Ed and the $900,000 we anticipate getting from the MAF. So those went well. The two, it might seem early to you, but the 2014 budget process has begun. We have started to have meetings talking about financial goals for the following year and some of the objectives we hope to achieve. I've said this before, and I think it bears saying again, I'm always open to comments, criticisms, discussions, whatever you may wish to have coming up in September, probably be a good time to do that, since that's when we'll be truly rolling up our sleeves and getting going. I have a statement I would like to read. I have not, I typically give very short reports, this will be an exception, so I hope you'll bear with me and just consider that I'm kind of using up minutes I gave back a long time for the course of the year. It's regarding the last meeting. I wanted to attend the council meeting of July 22nd, but I was away, and therefore called in by phone, an arrangement that is sanctioned under state law and was pre-approved by our borough attorney, Matt Jacoby. I knew that the proposed bond issue to fund part of the cost of the 49 acres and the turf fields was on the agenda. Since I had worked on it issue practically from the first day I joined the council, I wanted to participate in what I thought would be a ceremonial vote. But a combination of misinformation, bad analysis, and outright distortions made it anything but the pro forma vote I had anticipated. Since some of the points raised by those in opposition should, for the benefit of Madison, not go unchallenged, I would like to address several of the most egregious statements. The first statement, we have rushed to bond. If you believe that, you're either new to these discussions or haven't been paying attention. In the corporate world, from start to finish, issuing a bond takes approximately 90 days. We began serious deliberations in February and went to market last week. That's approximately six months, during which time there were numerous discussions by the council and presentations by borough staff and me concerning this issuance. In my personal view, I would have liked to see us move faster, but we were dependent on the actions of others who helped up, who held up our progress. Statement number two, we should not issue bonds but rather pay for at least the fields with some unused dormant money in the borough's coffers. Not sure why the fields and not the land was the focus, since the land is bonded longer, at a higher interest rate, and will therefore incur a larger interest expense over the life of the bonds. But much about this discussion makes little sense to me. The timing of this proposal could not have been worse. We had completed our discussions with S and P that were necessary
(inaudible)
That's all right. That were necessary prior going to market. As a result of that review, S and P affirmed our ongoing financial strategy by upgrading us to a AAA stable credit. They reviewed in detail why we were bonding, how the interest in principle would be paid, and what type of burden this would impose on the borough's finances. They also reviewed our surplus accounts and our funded They also reviewed our surplus accounts and our fund balance and opined that the borough was practicing sound financial management. If at the last minute we went back to them and told them we had changed our minds, we want to draw down fund balances to pay for the fields and issue less debt, I expect that their reaction would not have been favorable. Also, we pre-marketed this issue, a typical practice. In my experience, as unforgiving as S&amp;P can be, they have nothing on the markets. Keep in mind that although this bond issue is significant to us, it is a small blip in the market that could very easily be ignored if we looked as if we didn't know what we were doing. Changing our strategy at the very last minute would no doubt have that appearance to many market participants. But forget about timing and market reaction. Let's go to the substance of the matter. Why not take 1.265 million out of our fund balance account so we don't have to bond for the fields? The money in the fund balance account comes from projects that have been funded typically by the issuance of debt and then never happened. What is now in that account is the remainder of the money raised for the canceled Elmer Street project of several years ago. Unless there's another such event, when the fund balance is spent, it will remain at zero. Fund balances have been a significant source of capital for over the last two years. If we took the remaining fund balance of 1.464 million, not approximately 2 million, as some have claimed, and funded the borough share of the cost of the fields, we would have had approximately $200,000 left in fund balance. That isn't much money, given that we've taken 1 million out of fund balance to add to capital over the last two years. Interestingly, on the watch of my predecessor, $272,400 was taken out of fund balances and allocated to operating expenses. A totally inappropriate use of those funds, in my opinion."
Ben, if you'd actually just stick with the current facts, and we don't want to go back to, just as a department report.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. As part of the 2014 budget, we will be renaming the fund balance account the General Capital Fund Balance. Although that won't have the force of law, it may well prevent a repeat of last year's inappropriate spend of fund balance by future council members. Third and final statement. The electric surplus will be available for our capital needs. I admit it, I have a bad habit of spending only the money I can absolutely count on and preferably what is already mine to spend. The number of times in recent months I heard someone say, "We'll cover that with electric surplus," is over the top. The candidates the councilwoman Bailey and I ran against last year were ready to reduce our electric rates in anticipation of surplus. Now we are covering future capital expenditures with surplus, and that's only the beginning. Moreover, at this time, we're not entirely sure how much additional surplus will be generated, since, among other things, I can't tell you how much electricity the borough is likely to use. Oh, and by the way, although we should receive some of the additional surplus in 2014, we won't enjoy the total increase until 2015. I would like to end by stepping back a moment from the particulars of this incident. When Councilwoman Bailey and I ran for the positions we now hold, we made clear that we would operate in a bipartisan fashion to do what is best for Madison. I've been open to all ideas regardless of source, and I'm appreciative for all that I've learned from the residents who take their civic role very seriously. I have always been open and receptive to opposing points of view, and I have never felt that I know all the answers. But the last-minute springing on the council of new approaches to problems that have been discussed endlessly is not productive, nor, in my opinion, the way I believe this council should conduct its business. I have a little more, but I think I've gone long enough, so I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for filling in some of the gaps. Not just a reminder to all the council members that department reports are, should be department reports. You've covered a lot that needed to be covered, but also responded to comments from the audience or newspaper, and we want to avoid that. Thank you. Moving on to communications and petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Counsel received an email July 24th from Suzanne McShane regarding increased non-conforming activities off of Sampson. A letter received July 29th from Alfreda Smith of Carteret Court regarding paving completed on Green Village Road. And an email received August 4th from Rachel Pascrella from Gibbons Place regarding a garage being built on Lathrop Avenue.
Thank you. As mentioned, we are going to move to the hearing on Ordinance 32. I ask the Borough Clerk to read the statement on hearings.
Okay. The ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on July 22nd, 2013. It was posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting copies.
I call up Ordinance 32 and ask the clerk to read that said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 34 of the Borough Code entitled Police Department to Reorganize the Composition of the Police Department.
I open the hearing for Ordinance 32. For anyone wishing to comment, please step to the lectern, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is anyone wishing to be heard on Ordinance 32? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 32-2013.
Second. Counsel's discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 32-2013 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Call up, I ask for motion on Resolution 234. And can you read that by title?
Resolution of the Borough of Madison authorizing appointment of Sergeant James Kiviza in the Madison Police Department effective August 12th, 2013.
Motion?
I say move.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
May I be the first to say, "Happy birthday, Sergeant Kiviza." Resolution 235-2013.
Resolution of the Borough of Madison authorizing appointment of Sergeant Joseph Longo in the Madison Police Department effective August 12th, 2013.
Mayor, I move Resolution 235-2013.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
It's not Joe's birthday, so I can't say, "Happy birthday, Sergeant Longo," but welcome Sergeant Longo. They will be sworn in tomorrow, but we will bring him back in September for a more formal swearing-in in front of a larger audience.
Congratulations, Joe. Congratulations. Yeah, and happy birthday.
All right, we now move to invitation for discussion. This is one of two. This is one with the more limiting rules. You may comment on any resolution that is on the consent agenda or any of our agenda discussions. Agenda discussions include Senior Center Policies and Code of Conduct, number two, which says item removed, is item removed, so that's not up for discussion. Item three has also been removed, which was the Borough Code Regarding Business Hours. That will come back in September, so that is not up for discussion. Item four, new water and sewer connection fee schedule. Five is merchant tenant parking fees. And six is appropriation of $25,000 for general capital for the police impound garage. With those agenda items or resolutions, if there's anyone wishing to comment, please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Ed Revholz, 351 Woodland Road. On resolution, the last one. 812-2013-6. This is a similar effort when I was a councilman. What is the purpose of this?
What number is that, again?
This one on the bottom? Do I have a right to talk, ask a question about that?
What's the number?
812-2003-6. It's $25,000 for the parking lot.
Oh, the impound garage?
That's an ordinance, so.
Can I ask a question about it? Or is this not the time?
It's been introduced, so it's under.
Is it just being introduced tonight?
Yeah, so you cannot.
You can pose a question.
Yeah, ask.
There's actually going to be a public hearing at the meeting in September on this issue. But if you have a question, you're free to ask.
Actually, this is on the impound yard?
Yeah, the impound yard.
Yes, that is an agenda discussion, so yes.
Is, can I ask a question?
Yes, you can ask a question.
Thanks.
Is that your question?
We're going to, we tow cars, and they get parked here, and we charge whoever it is to park the cars here. Is that the purpose of this?
That is, we'll make sure we cover that as we get to the discussion.
The only concern I have, and I've made this a number of years ago when I was in the council, that being a small business, if these people are storing these cars, towed cars somewhere else, may be part of somebody's business. And I don't like, I did not care for the town coming in and being competitive to small businesses. At one time, when this came up, when I was on council, the chief of police estimated they would increase their revenue by $100,000 in one year. I doubted his word, but that's $100,000 coming out of small businesses in this community.
All right, so when we come to the discussion, if we could cover the regulations around impound yards, because I think it'll be explained there.
All right.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on resolutions or the agenda items?
Sam Cerciolo, Madison Park Avenue. Resolution 232. Is that, that's where the Kirby Center is, right?
I will not, I'll let. Sam, yes, that is the Lucy D. It's a shared parking facility between the Kirby Center and the Lucy D users of the recreational fields. And what's proposed is that the lot would be restored and that the YMCA would contribute 80% of the cost of the renovation, because they use it primarily during the day. Our sports users use it on the weekends and in the evenings. So there's a sharing arrangement of the cost. We would design it, build it, and the YMCA would reimburse us 80% of the cost, up to $100,000.
But we paid 20%?
We pay 20%, which is approximately what our usage. We looked at what percentage of our teams use the fields in the evening and the hours.
What do you mean by teams?
Girls and women's softball, the Little League, the Lucy D, people who want to go to Lucy D fields and who don't want to park on the street use that lot in the evening and on weekends. So we're paying 20%, the Y's paying 80%.
Very good. Resolution 240. There was a change order. What was that change order all about, the $13,000?
It's the Rosedale Avenue.
Yeah.
We, engineers on vacation this week.
These change orders, I just like to, you know, it's like a little extra bonus for some contractors. What was that all about?
Oh, it wasn't the light. They did the light also up there, and that was part of the whole.
Yeah, that included.
The Fairview Greenwood light.
Yeah.
That was only part of the expenses, Sam.
What was it?
The light at the intersection of Fairview and Greenwood, at the end of Rosedale, you know, that light.
Oh, they put that light up?
It was for changes in quantity.
Some changes in quantity?
Yeah.
You got something to say, Bob, or can I go?
The engineer put a report together. Yeah, it's increased quantities of payment sidewalk and signage and striping were minor, but it includes some of that. And there was some additional modifications to the original purchase order amount, which resulted in 3% increase.
You get a change, just the engineer, okay, the change order, the council?
They have to be reviewed. There are the only ones that, by policy, if it's a change order that, you know, will hold up work unless there's a review on it right away.
We have this construction committee and this street committee. Do they check and make sure these things are warranted? That's all I'm saying.
It's, there's a process for checking and reviewing.
Resolution 247. My suggestion is, this, he does nice work, this guy. He's a big contractor. And I'm suggesting that, at the last meeting, I mentioned that the water main there in front of Whole Foods, it's real bad shape, and that you need a professional to fix that right. It's got to be dug out, maybe 60 feet, whatever it takes, the length and everything, because it's a brand-new road, and it's a shame that happened, and we're responsible. But I would suggest that this contractor, why do you got him here? You know, to say, this, he ought to go down there and give you a price on that or something, you know? It's got to be fixed, but it's got to be done by a professional. And this guy does nice work. He's got big equipment, and, like I said, he does good work.
We are working with the state, and we do need to fix that, so.
The last one is 249.
We actually brought that up at the Construction Review Committee meeting last Thursday, and I guess the problem is that it requires very deep milling. Is that what they said?
Nine inches.
Yeah. And it was our, it's our responsibility, because it was our pipe that broke.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, don't try to do it with our guys. You need the professionals.
That certainly is not an in-house job.
Yeah, right.
Right, but it is absolutely being addressed.
The last one is the 249. What is that Madison Main Street Foundation? I never heard that one.
Madison Main Street Foundation. It's similar to like the Friends of Madison Shadtree. It is a 501(c)(3) program to support the efforts of the DDC so they can accept foundation grants, they can accept donations from residents. And so they are the fundraising arm of the DDC. DDC, for the most part, is run through donated or fundraised dollars to the effort of the Main Street Foundation.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none? We move on to, I've got my sheets out of order. Again, we're on to agenda discussions here. And Senior Center Policies. Ms. Vitale?
Apparently, there were a few instances down at the Senior Citizen, at the Civic Center, and Edna had decided that she wanted the policies to be reviewed. And this is it, basically, I believe, that Matt took a look at it, and I guess there were a few changes.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, to the policy. But it's just a reiteration at this point with the changes so that we have good policies and procedures in that particular department as well.
And so this is formalizing and then putting on record that these policies are the policies of the borough.
Right.
Matt, do you have anything to add on that, or?
No, we reviewed them. We brought them into compliance with law to make sure that they were compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act, the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination, state and federal law. And so we made the changes. So it sets forth the rules of conduct at the Senior Center. And if you adopt it here, again, it gives you the weight of the borough behind those policies. We also think it's important, too, for insurance purposes, to make sure that we are, you know, having consistent policies throughout the borough.
Any questions or discussions in council? All right, this is Resolution 239, which is on the consent agenda. New water and sewer fee. New. New water sewer connection fee schedule.
I can take that. The borough auditor recommended on an annual basis, state law requires that the fees that we charge new users, not existing homeowners, but new users who want to connect to either a water or sewer connection system, to contribute towards the cost of that system by paying a fee to hook up to our system. Our residents, over X number of years, have invested millions of dollars to create this infrastructure. And the intent of the state statute is that new users who are now joining a system that they didn't contribute to would be charged a fee for the privilege of connecting to that system that they didn't pay to create. So the water fee is being recommended based on an analysis done by the auditor of the capital investment over the years and the interest carry and all the costs the residents of Madison have paid and the taxpayers at what would be a fair charge for a new person connecting to our system. For the water, the rate is being recommended for the calendar year 2013 to be increased from the current fee of $2,700 a year per unit to $2,945 per unit. Similarly, on the sewer, we now charge $4,000 per unit to connect to our sewer system. That fee would be increased for 2013, for the remainder of 2013, from $4,000 to $4,775. That's the recommendation.
Comments, questions?
Yeah. Ray, is this something that needs to be done every single year now?
Yes.
Well, it's encouraged to be done every year, because as our costs are going up, the fees will escalate, yes.
Especially since it's based on a calculation on the value of infrastructure in a way that you want to revisit it.
Every year.
Yeah, okay. Any questions? All right, so this is... Ordinances 36 and 37 that are listed for introduction. 2014 merchant and tenant parking fees.
I can take it. Our chief is here. The chief approached, Jim Burnett and myself, trying to encourage heavier utilization of the merchant parking lots and the tenant parking lots and to get, in particular, the store owners and their employees off of the street to create more space for customers and users of the stores to get closer access to the stores. In a meeting with the merchants, the chief has identified that one of the inhibiting factors in the past has been that the fee was increased approximately two years ago to $225 for a merchant fee for the year or a tenant parking fee. So the suggestion is, rather than have vacant spaces with a higher price, do like the airlines do and reduce the price and try to encourage a higher, heavier utilization. So what's suggested, and we think will be cast neutral, because we're going to be selling more permits, we hope is the goal, is to reduce the fee effective January 1, 2014, for merchant and tenant parking fees from the current fee of $225 to $150 apiece for that. And administratively, the chief has also been very creative, working with Jim on another, some administrative changes in terms of how people could post if you have multiple employees, but they only work... You know, we have hair cutting salons that the same person may not work for five days in a row and they only work two days. But if the store purchased a merchant permit by posting those licenses with the police department and we had their plates and the driver's license number, that privilege for that one permit could be extended to multiple employees in the same location. So it's a way of getting employees safe parking at a reasonable price and getting more, hopefully, customers into the stores, because they can park closer. So that's the theory behind it. The resident commuter parking fees, we're recommending no increase in that. So the good news for 2014 is resident commuter parking fees will stay the same as they have been for the last three years at $425. And the merchant fee and the tenant parking fee is being reduced from $225 to $150, if you approve this.
And this is the reduction and also allowing that it's not tied to the vehicle owner, it's tied to the shop owner, which I think that is the key thing. We want to do whatever we can to encourage the employees to leave the best parking spots for the shoppers. And I don't think our current system does that. So by reducing the fee, allowing it to be moved around, I think we will get cars where they belong and will help the shop owners. Any other comments or...
Yeah, you know, I think probably one of the best things, besides reducing this, is working with each one of the store owners. I think that's a big plus, because I remember talking to Frank Iannarone and he has maybe about three or four young kids that, you know, drew students or whatever, that worked for him. And they certainly can't afford this and he had to put that money out. So, you know, that's a very good thought that the chief had. I think it's going to help a lot.
Another suggestion, which we can look at another date, when the chief put in the hopper, came from a resident. I don't know how many are out there, but I've heard of college students that have internships in the city. And then, so they end up being a two-month commuter and don't have a place to park the car. During the summer, we have underutilization of the commuter lots, is whether we could do a two-month internship permit process. So it's that even the daily... I think, you know, even cheaper than the five... You know, I know you can get a daily spot, because they're underutilized in the summer. But, you know, $5 for that college student comes down to park on the street or that's a couple of Starbucks and they'll probably park in the street. So, just a thought.
Yep. That's cool.
And that is resolution 242, 2013, that is on consent agenda. An appropriation of the $25,000 general capital for the improvement fund for the police department impound garage. And we need to cover Ed's questions.
Yep. Councilman Rebholz, a question related to the fact that, right now, if a vehicle is towed on our street, we don't take possession of the vehicle for overnight or long-term storage. It goes to the contract vendor who...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'll speak up. What this ordinance makes reference to is the evidence impound yard. So if a car or a vehicle or an RV or any type of material that can't be accommodated in the property evidence room at the police headquarters, because of size or its nature, would be stored at the DPW yard. And that this is to improve that facility. If a vehicle, for example, is towed out of Stop &amp; Shop parking lot tonight, we don't... We are not the impound facility for that vehicle. It goes to the contract tower entity. So we're not in the business of extracting storage fees or giving people a hard time to get their car back. This is specifically the evidence that we retain and are obligated under the Attorney General Guidelines to secure the chain of evidence, keep custody and control 24/7, so that when it's produced in court. So it's more things that have been stolen, that we have possession of, that are not going to be returned to the owner if we can find the owner until after the end of that criminal proceeding. So that's what this is about. And there's a memo in everybody's packet about the improvements that are needed. There's an HVAC, there's a mold issue, there's fencing that's required, security cameras under the Attorney General Guidelines have to be there, so they can be monitored from the police dispatch desk to make sure the evidence material is not being tampered with in the segregated area. That's the intent. This was in the 2013 budget. This is consistent with the budget. It was allocated in 2013 for $25,000. And that's what the bids came in at, about $24,882. So the chief has $12.
So this is... And well beyond car store, it's whatever that is not in a...
Whatever we see, it could be a boat, it could be anything that's stolen and that we've recovered, likes of those.
All right, any questions or comments from council? Okay, that's ordinance 38, which is listed for introduction. All right. Ordinances for hearings. I'll have the clerk read that statement again.
Yes. The remainder of the ordinances that were scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on July 22, 2013. All were posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting scene.
I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 31, 2013. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending ordinance 26, 2013, appropriating $250,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for remediation and safety improvements to increase the appropriation for the Bailey Ellard Fields from $250,000 to $350,000.
I open the hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on ordinance 31, 2013, please step to lectern, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 31-2013.
Second.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 31-2013, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. I call up ordinance 32-2013.
32.
We did that. I didn't cross that off. Thank you. Deja vu all over again. Ordinance 33, 2013.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $8,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for repairs to the Cole Park Fountain.
I open the hearing for anyone wishing to comment on ordinance 33-2013. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Oh, mayor, I move ordinance 33-2013. I was waiting for Mr. Lander to give me that.
I second it.
Discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 33-2013, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 34, 2013. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $100,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for repairs of the East Street parking lot.
Yep. You're going to... Just... This is a partnership with the YMCA, so...
Are you going out? Yes, to go out. I'll read it again, yes. Mm-hmm. Okay. I open the hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this?
On ordinance 34, 2013.
I'll close the hearing.
President Vitale, council president Vitale, I move ordinance 34-2013.
And I second. Any discussion?
Any discussion? Counsel?
No.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Roll. Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Do you want me to read the mayor's statement, then? Yeah, okay. Mm-hmm. We declare ordinance 34-2013, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Your timeout's over.
Yep. Not the first, we're going to the last timeout. Just so before you leave tonight, make sure you'll sign that.
Sign that one. I will.
All right, we are now moving on to invitation for discussion, second round. This is when you may comment on anything. And again, same rules apply. State your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Those rules, please, anyone wishing to speak, step up to lectern. Pat?
Pat Rowe, 25 Pine Ave., Madison, New Jersey. There were a couple of issues I took with Mr. Walklewitz's statement, but the one I think that, you know, I've been really pushing the hardest for the last year is regarding the surplus, the upcoming surpluses for electric utility. Yes, none of us wants to spend money that we don't have yet. But frankly, every year we build budgets around what we expect to earn. And I think, as we look forward to next year's budget, especially the capital budget, I think we definitely need to start to take a long-term look at what that utility is going to be able to provide for us, even if it's just a conservative view, for what our electric consumption has been over the last several years. Additionally, I think it's not unfair, given the fact that over the last decade or so, the residents have seen their electric rates go up by about 100% as the wholesale costs went up. As the wholesale costs come down, we should also look at whether the residents can enjoy a reduction in the rates, coupled with, you know, sufficient funds being made available to the borough for its own capital needs. So that's something I would recommend strongly as we look forward to the upcoming budget for next year, as we start our planning for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say that as we, Ben and I and our committee sit down, is to see where the planning, strategic planning will go. A major part of that, especially since Madison is different than most communities, will be the electric utility. And I think that's...
And as you know, Mr. Mayor, I've been advocating this for the past year, since your town hall meetings. It's not something I'm doing as a result of any, to go current event. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Sam?
Do I have to sign in again? Sam Cerciolo from Madison Park Avenue. Just a few positive things, then there's a couple of negative things. You want the positive first?
Let's start with the positive.
The gun bust is doing great. Kid is doing a good job.
Got his picture at work the last week.
And the New Jersey, you know, that little bridge looks good, the trusses look good. Post office painted, the new windows, the house on Rizel Avenue, you can see what it looks like now, but now on the other side. These are just suggestions now. And I don't know, like, when I make suggestions or people go in, do you, with the council or maybe you guys go look at these suggestions?
You just listed a whole...
You just got a ride on the one on Main, so you didn't even have to look at it. But my suggestion is, go look at the garbage cans, they're terrible. They have to be cleaned, they got to be power washed. And it's a shame. Also, you know, we have a beautiful thing in May, it's called May Day, 1,000 people come, it's a beautiful thing. While I walk around town a lot, I see a million weeds around the trees that they're just full of moches and all that. I mean, they got to... You know, the town should be proud of what they do on May Day and you got to keep it up. So, I mean, they could send one guy down there, once in a while, pull the weeds around the trees and you'll... If you go down there and look, you'll see what I'm talking about, in front of the circle of trees where they have the nice mulch, it's all weeds going through it all. So those two things, I think we should look at. Also, it's very important, I don't know, he's walked by a dozen times, did you look at these front entranceway in this borough hall? If you don't cork those granite stone, it's going to cost us two or three times as much when, after this winter, because water's going to get into the cork in and it's going to pop all those and they're going to have to replace them. So to just take a look at that. I mean...
Got that on the list.
I mean, you answer, these are important things that I think should be looked at, Bob. That's it.
Thank you. And we appreciate you bringing it back. And so you've noted that some of those things you brought to our attention have been taken care of and we still have a list to take care of, but we'll keep on plugging away. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the hearing, or the meeting, and move on to introduction of ordinances.
Oops, I was skipping. Okay, the ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for September 9, 2013. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up the ordinances for first reading and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 35 has been removed. So ordinance 36, 2013, is ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 190 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Water to update the water connection fee schedule.
Mayor, I move ordinance 36-2013.
I'll second.
Discussion. We've already talked about that. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Ordinance 37, 2013. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 155 of the Borough Code entitled Sewer to update the sewer connection fee schedule.
Mayor, I move ordinance 37-2013.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Ordinance 38, 2013. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $25,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for improvements to the Police Department impound garage.
Mayor, I move ordinance 38-2013.
I second it.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
So we'll do the consent agenda, omitting 232, after the clerk reads the statement. And then we'll do that separately.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolution 233-2013. Resolution 236, 2013 to resolution 249, 2013. 251. Oh, 251, excuse me. We had, we had 250 and 251, right? Sorry.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion, or any need to be pulled? Okay, roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we call up resolution 232-2013.
Read it by title.
Read it by title.
Resolution of the Borough of Madison authorizing a shared service agreement with the Madison YMCA for reconstruction of the East Street parking lot.
Council President Vitale, I move our 232-2013.
And I'll second.
This is very confusing.
Roll call.
Any discussion?
Any discussion, any more discussion about that? Okay. Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, there is no unfinished business. We have the approval of vouchers.
Point of order, mayor. When will I get the opportunity to answer many of the scurrilous charges that were levied against me in a personal attack by Councilman Walklewitz? I mean, at least, you know, when I raised the issue at the last meeting, it was in a public debate, it wasn't sort of a statement laden with half-truths and simply says it's factual incorrect. This is now the second meeting in a row where, you know, this has kind of happened and, you know, they counter to your rules on how we should treat each other. And I do believe it's outside the scope of the modified Roberts Rules of Orders that we use in these meetings. And I would insist for the opportunity for rebuttal.
And this is why I did ask, you know, council reports should be based in council reports and not necessarily a counter or, you know, using adjectives and reports are not appropriate. I'll discuss with.
I mean, there was just, there's completely misstatement of facts that are on the record and I think that it's important that, you know, that, look, I mean, the councilman called in and he said several times he couldn't hear what was going on and he just proved it by saying, I asked to spend 1.2 million dollars and that was never at all ever discussed. I mean, just simple facts like that. All right. Do I get a chance to rebut or do I just sit here and wait for next week when I get to make a statement?
Well, I think, I mean, let me just say this, the, you had a statement that the record speaks for itself. What you said on the record at the hearing on July 22nd it was, I believe that was the day, correct?
Yes.
That's, that's part of the record. That's part of the minutes, so.
What about the stuff about using fund balance that the tax levied against me?
Well, I think that if you believe that, that, you know, there are things that you want to correct, when you have this discussion, the time for discussion under the agenda where there's a discussion that takes place, council discussion.
About an opening statement?
No.
I did model U N, I never saw that.
Hold on a second. But I think, you know, the, my point is, is that you made a statement on the record on July 22nd. Your statement speaks for itself.
I opened the debate. I did not make a statement. I opened the debate during council discussion.
And you made statements that speak for themselves and they're part of the record, they're memorialized. If your statements are contrary to what the other, Councilman Walklewitz said tonight, then the record speaks for itself. I don't know if you need to have a constant debate. I don't think it's productive to have a debate either way, I admit this, it's probably more productive to do it when you're both here at the same time. However, I think that you had the ability to make a statement that day and that's part of the record and that is memorialized in the record. So that can't be overturned. I mean, if Councilman Walklewitz disagrees with your statement, that sets forth in the minutes.
But he, but he made factual misstatements in his statement.
Well, I think that what you have is you have, Councilman Walklewitz made, you know, his understanding of what was said and his opinion. And if you disagree.
But it wasn't factual.
Well, I, I, I'm not going to get in the middle of a debate back and forth. I don't think it's productive either way. My point to you is that you made a statement.
Yes.
And your statements, your suggestions.
In a public debate, I made a statement where other parties had the opportunity to actively engage in debate. In this instance, okay, I was not given the opportunity to actively defend myself.
But it's not a debate, you had a debate, there was a public hearing.
Yes.
On the ordinance.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
And during that public hearing in the ordinance, before there was a vote, when there was the open discussion, you decided, I think other council people made the decision to have a statement, which is, you're right, it was a public hearing, second we have members of the public get up during an ordinance, they have the right to speak. And you have a right to speak and it's part of the official record. But Mr. Walklewitz said tonight it's not part of an official record. The official record on that ordinance was done that evening, that's part of the official record. Mr. Walklewitz believes that you made misstatements, you know, he said tonight, I think the mayor, you know, cut Mr. Walklewitz off at some point when it was going astray of what the discussion was on the agenda topics. If you believe that Mr. Walklewitz, you know, misstated something, show him in the record. I think the record will speak for itself because that is an official record, the minutes will be adopted.
On September 9th.
September 9th. So I think that that would be appropriate time to do is really go over your minutes of what you said at the September 9th meeting when we're adopting the official minutes of that meeting. In that hearing.
I understand. Thank you.
So we'll, and we'll, with the time in between, without a second meeting this month, we'll make, we'll get the minutes out in the time we have.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarification and again, it's a reminder of how we present department reports. Vouchers.
Vouchers. Public safety, $24,228.72. Health and public assistance, $4,976.75. Public works and engineering, $346,821.51. Community affairs, $4,750.67. Finance and borough clerk, $5,373,074.87. And utilities, $1,791,024.46. Total is $7,544,876.98.
Motion for the vouchers.
Mayor, I approve. Oh, God, I forgot what I was going to say.
I move the voucher.
You know what I, you know what I was thinking? When the freeholders were here, I just have to say this because I've been dying to say it. This is, what they say, the approval of the vouchers is pay the bills. And I thought that was really a cool thing, so I wanted to say it anyway. So I move approval of the vouchers. Go back to us.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any, any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
We have no new business?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much and we will see you September 9th and everyone enjoy. Summer goes well beyond Labor Day, but.